Good evening, welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the school committee. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Karen?
Here. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised. Mr. Matucci, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sure.
Mr. Boncory, can you please present the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Matucci. Thank you, Mr. Boncory. Okay, we're gonna forego the executive session this evening as there is nothing that requires it at this time. Moving on to public comment, do we have any public comment this evening?
There are no hands up, so no public comment at this time.
Okay, moving on, there are no delegates and visitors, so we'll go to our minutes of our August thirty first, two thousand and twenty meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of our August thirty first, two thousand and twenty meeting?
Motion to accept.
Seconded by Mr. Boncory, any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to financial and business procedures. We have three items in that column, the first being warrant SVW two one dash three, the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Can I get a motion for that warrant, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Capabianco, any discussion? Hearing none, Patty, can I please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, we also have a payroll warrant SPW twenty-one dash oh four, the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Can I get a motion on that payroll warrant, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Powell, any discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please, for the record, Patty?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm standing on that, I apologize. Okay, moving on, pre-K tuition refunds, vote to approve refunds, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell to approve the refunds of the pre-K tuition, can I get a second?
Second.
I can't.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci, any further discussion? Hearing none, Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Sorry, can I, can I get a clarification on what we're voting on? Just the, yeah, what is the refund exactly, what are we agreeing to?
It's for what people?
Oh, sorry, Brian.
Oh, Susan, you could, you could explain it, but it's a refund for the pre-K for last year for the COVID.
For this year.
This year.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
I'm muted.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have no buildings and grounds this evening, general functions reports, we have no subcommittee reports or superintendent, actually, we have a superintendent's report, so Ms. Howard, would you like to begin your superintendent's report?
Off mute, no, it's good, leave, leave it like that, yeah.
It's been a long six months, so if I'm on mute, there'd be a lot of people that would be very excited about that, so thank you. My superintendent's report is not overly long, but there are some really important things to go over, so Wednesday is our first day of remote learning, we're excited to have that kick off, we've done the past ten working days with our staff, everyone has been in and working diligently on learning protocols, getting used to the environment, looking at all the improvements that we have put in place in terms of all of our signage, going through the many, many protocols that the Department of Ed has asked us to put in place for staff and students, to work on those protocols that will be in effect when students actually come back to us in the hybrid model, so lots of work was done around that, we have spent quite a bit of time working on technology and our Google Classroom platforms, many of our staff were savvy with Google Classroom, but a fair amount of our staff had not used it in the past, especially at the lower elementary level, pre-K through five, so big, big learning curve for a lot of our staff members, and they have been nothing short of amazing and willing to take on this new type of, of teaching, which is definitely not easy, I think that we've all experienced some Zoom etiquette issues of our own, some difficulty logging on and logging off and going into multiple rooms, our teachers, many who have not used these platforms prior to the spring, and now have been asked to use them more consistently and just about all day, every day, have been working on creative ways to do so, to learn it, to keep our kids engaged, to involve other people in their Zoom meetings, service providers, bringing those folks into their Zoom meetings to work with our students, going into breakout rooms to provide smaller group instruction, so kudos to our staff for really digging in and, and going to a place that's not overly comfortable with a lot of people, we've spent a fair amount of time over the summer as well, I don't want to leave the summer out, many of our teachers voluntarily participated in Google Classroom trainings over the summer to help learn this platform and how that relates to their level of teaching, because it's very different at the kindergarten level than it is, say, at the middle school and high school level. Technology is always sort of an unknown, we feel strongly that, I know more about tech terms now than I ever have, I'm not an expert, but I'm getting there, our bandwidth, which is sort of our internet capacity and how that will hold up for us during Zooming, so if you can picture all of our teachers and many of our ESPs and service providers on Zoom at the same time, what that, that might do to the internet capabilities of our schools, so we have tested that, we're continuing to test it as, as early again as tomorrow, we will all be on it once again, making sure our connectivity is good, we have lots of tricks of the trade through retrofit, which is an outside manager of, of our internet and our security systems, working with us to make sure that we will be at full capacity for Wednesday. I'm saying that, and you hear me knocking on wood, that it will all go well, however, as you, you have experienced at home yourself, sometimes the internet goes out in people's homes, we are gonna work with our families to make sure if that's the case, that we are helping them. Over the past week or so, our families have been sort of inundated with emails from our principals about what the day's gonna look like, how their child is gonna be involved, how to pick up your Chromebook and your materials, and what it's going to really look like on that first day. The first three days are gonna look a little bit different in every building, we have, some of our students based on age need some more handholding through the beginning of this, some more orientation, many of our parents are gonna need that support as well, so depending upon what grade level your child is in, it will, will look a little bit different the first three days, and then once we start back up again next week, we should be full force in terms of teaching and learning through Google Classroom and our Zoom meetings. With that being said, I'm hoping that parents, as well as school committee members, can be patient with us and, and use your voice and speak with your teacher or your principal if you're having technological issues at home, we have addressed internet issues with some of our families, technology issues with some of our families, in terms of Chromebooks, to this date, every student that has requested, every family that has requested a Chromebook and needs it, has been given that Chromebook, we do not want students sharing Chromebooks in homes, because we're at different grade levels, the expectation is the students will be engaged and be very difficult to share those Chromebooks, if Chromebooks go down or break while they're in use, we have a plan to swap those out and get those out to our parents, so we're pleased with, with that work that has gone on so far. We, let's see, Chromebooks and materials, school lunch, this is sort of a big deal, school lunch is free right now for all students in the community, all of our children are entitled to a free school lunch from and breakfast from now, September thirty first, we have put that out in our emails, in the principal calls to the parents, we have the form up on our website, we have our parent liaison, Ms. Fabiola, who has been helping some of our families who need support and do not speak English or read English, and they need support, she's been helping those families access the website so that they can fill out the form, as of this afternoon, we had fifty families that were asking to avail themselves of the free breakfast and lunch, the way it will work is you can pick what days of the week you want breakfast and lunch to be ready for your children, and on two days of the week, on Mondays, in the morning and in the afternoon, and on Wednesdays, in the morning and the afternoon, we will have lunches and breakfast bundled for you, so Monday mornings, you'll be able to pick up, or Monday during the school day, a breakfast and a lunch for your child or children that will last you Monday and Tuesday, and then on Wednesdays, you'll be able to pick up a breakfast and lunch that will last families Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and there's gonna be some options for the lunch, we put a Google form together, we're actually gonna also have three drop-off and pickup locations, so coming to the high school and the Cummings School will be two of the options, and then we're also gonna drive lunch packages or meals down to the landing, so that folks who live down the point or near the beach area will not have to walk all the way to the Cummings or to the high school to pick those up, and we've also left an email address for parents who are having an issue getting to those pickups, they can contact us and we'll make arrangements to ensure that our students have breakfast and lunch, and we'll keep pushing that out every day, and the more conversations we have with our parents and the more sessions that the principals do, open sessions with parents, they'll continue to communicate that to our families, so the more the merrier, we'd like everybody to take breakfast and lunch, especially now that it's free, it will save you from making lunch, buying lunch, and you can ensure that your students will have something every day. Another item that's important, we are working with the teachers' union on finalizing a memorandum of understanding, which is a requirement, change learning environments, or you start to do things that are not in the teachers' collective bargaining agreement, things have been going well, we have a few sticking points that we are working on, and we are hoping to have that all resolved by next week, that is the plan, and one of the issues that I know parents are concerned about are, are high-need students, so we have a category of high-need students, those are our students with disabilities, students who are homeless, and some of our economically disadvantaged students, working with Jen O'Connell, who's our pupil personnel director, last week, Jen and I held a Zoom webinar for many of those families, I believe we had sixty-five families participate, the commissioner is very clear that that is the first group of students that we need to bring back into school as soon as possible, we are working with the union to have a date to do that as soon as we can, and, and perhaps prior to us returning to hybrid, so more to come on that, Ms. O'Connell remains in communication with those families to keep them up to date, and they remain pretty vigilant on emailing us for updates. So, in speaking about the hybrid model, and when we're gonna be returning to school, I believe it was a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the fact that we're sort of in a no-choice land right now, because we are a district that is a red community, meaning our incidence of COVID positive cases is exceeding the norm, we are one of a handful of communities in this area that has been told that we cannot go back to school in-person learning in our hybrid model right now until we move ourselves out of the red, and we all know that the way to do that is, at the bottom of every email or communication I send, which is wear your mask, keep your hands clean, wash them, and wash them as many times as you can, and practice social distancing, we encourage people to continue to do that, and in my world, I'm encouraging you to do it so we can get our kids back in school as fast as possible. We put together our COVID return-to-school task force back in March, and built several subcommittees off that task force, one of the subcommittees we built was the COVID Health and Safety Subcommittee, which includes the town nurse, myself, the school nurse, we consult with the town health department, and hopefully, in the very near future, we will be bringing on members of the Winter Patrol Association to be a part of that. The purpose of that group initially was to talk about putting all of our safety protocols together, making sure our students and families had the information they needed, looking at our buildings and making sure structurally we had clean air and strong filtration systems, and PPE was a major component and element of the decision-making that went on with that particular group. Now that we have much of that in place, the next step in our process is to figure out with that group what we do now that we're in the red, and, and how does that look in terms of getting us where we want to be, ultimately, all of our kids back in school full-time, without having to have all the social distancing and mask-wearing, but prior to that, taking the step to get us back in the buildings in a hybrid model. The state was very clear about what you do when you end up in the red, they have not provided a heck of a lot of guidance on when your district comes out of red, what does that mean for you in terms of transitioning from now a fully remote model to a hybrid model, so for instance, how long, how long of a timeframe is it that you have to sit in green, because when you come out of red, you go into green, how long do you have to sit in green before you can actually bring your kids back into school? So the Department of Education about two weeks ago made the recommendation that we do that for several weeks, and several was defined as four, and so that's a long time, so if we were to transition and become a green district tomorrow, they would want us to sit in that green category for four weeks, and we also did not get a lot of guidance on what data points do you look at besides just the number that gets you into a color. So this COVID Subcommittee is made up of people in the healthcare field who understand the matrix, who understand the daily COVID positive rate in our community, which at a bare minimum is super confusing, you know, they say, you know, the total number of cases per hundred thousand, well, welcome to Winthrop, we're not a hundred thousand, so how does that translate, and how do you read that, and how is that fair to a district this small and a community this small to make us red, and it's very confusing, so however, the bottom line is, the governor of Massachusetts has said, if you're in the red, he and the commissioner have said, you can't go to school, you can't go to school, and on top of not being able to go to school, you also can't play sports at the high school level if your community is in the red. That's devastating to us as a small community, so we wanted to work on the metrics to see how quickly we could get ourselves back to school once we moved to the red, and what that entails is us looking at the numbers every single day of the per one hundred thousand count, which is what's holding us in the red, and then looking at our own, some other data points that Meredith Hurley and Tara Bowie, myself, and some other folks on that committee have also taken into account, because you need more than one data point, we're also looking at the average daily incident rate in Winthrop, so looking at ourselves and comparing ourselves to ourselves, so if we have an average daily incident rate of five or six on Monday, what does it look like on Tuesday, what does it look like on Wednesday, so this turn into green, we can start calculating that downward trend and that downward trajectory to get us back in to a hybrid model. Our plan is to continue also to watch our own school-based rates, so we haven't really had that yet, because our kids have not been technically back in school, however, the town nurse does get an accounting of the families and the people who have tested positive in our community, so now that school is back in session, we're gonna focus in on those numbers to see how many children that are school-aged are in those categories, and looking at that data will help us support why it makes sense to come back to school, so if no cohorts of children are in that category of, of being, testing positive for COVID, or if it's a low rate, that's some data to support bringing kids back into school. We're also gonna now have the ability to look at our staff, because staff has to, although many of our staff don't live in the community, which means if they tested positive, Meredith may, or the town may not get that information, part of working in the public school requires you to report if in fact you are COVID positive, your town might not report that to us, but you have to, so we'll be able to keep track of that data as well, and now that our teachers are back physically in school, that data will be very important to us, so we'll be able to track that based on them physically being here, so those are many of the data points that we're using over the next several weeks to, to continue to advocate for people to stay safe, to continue to talk about where the virus is going in this town and how it is beginning to trend downward, and pump people up to get it to continue to do that so that we can make informed decisions about getting our kids in school. We talked about November thirteenth as being a date to discuss that, we will be discussing it, and I will be discussing it with this group every week, I will be discussing it with you every week, there will be no surprises come November thirteenth about the plan that we are gonna be taking as a school, a school and a school committee in terms of that still being the target timeframe to switch back to hybrid if we can. We will need to give notice to our families, so our families now are of the understanding that we will be out until the thirteenth at, at a minimum, I think based on the numbers and the folks in my group, that that's pretty accurate in terms of if this is where we are today, and, and we need to sit for, at a minimum, we're recommending twenty-one calendar days, which is three weeks instead of four, twenty-one calendar days of being out of the red, that pretty much puts us right around that November date, if we know prior to November thirteenth that our trajectory is great and that we've been sitting in a good spot, we're continuing to go down, school committee can make a decision prior to that, I think November ninth, I believe, is our, November ninth is our next, is our first school committee in November, prior to the, to the, close to the thirteenth, and if our numbers are looking good at that point and we're maintaining our progress heading downward, we could potentially make a decision and then inform our parents that we'll be going back to school within, you know, ten school days. Just a point of interest, looking at the data, of the, the number that says how many cases per one hundred thousand over a fourteen-day period, as of July twenty-ninth, we had eleven, and they come out on Wednesdays, I, I get them every day, but the fourteen-day average comes out on a Wednesday, so in July, end of July, we had an eleven, a number, we were at number eleven, so that was the average number of cases in a fourteen-day period, August fifth, we went up to fourteen, I don't know if Phil had a question.
Yeah, I just think if we raise your guy, I talked to Meredith about an hour ago, planning on coming to the meeting, so we had updated information, and in the past fourteen days, we've had twenty-two cases, which is gonna keep us in the red for this Wednesday again, and, you know, we need to get people to keep getting tested, we've had, the testing was open today, and it's open every day from two to seven, and please go down and get tested so we can track this and we can keep it down, there've been twenty-seven-hundred-and-fifty-four people tested as of today, and we got eighteen thousand people in town, so let's get counted into that line, please.
So that, that, that number by the, by the day or by the week is, is definitely important, but if you, if you can think about where we were July twenty-ninth at eleven, August fifth at fourteen, August twelfth at seven point six, we had a blip in the road, but this is right about when testing started, we went up to eleven point four on August eleventh, August twenty-sixth, we were at nine point nine, September second, we were at eight point three, and September ninth, we were at eight point seven, so from August twenty-sixth to now, couple of weeks, we have stopped, even though we're doing more testing, it appears that the numbers are going down, and I think it's, you know, speaks to folks getting those tests done, but also people paying attention to what they're supposed to be doing, so we'll continue to watch those numbers and continue to update, we are not waiting until November thirteenth to think about this, we will be looking at this every single week, until then and informing the.
Ms. Swope?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm not sure that I understand, I know you sent out what you're thinking about in terms of metrics.
Yep, so that's just a draft, right?
Yeah, yeah, one is, I would be very interested in, in understanding the communities that have COVID virus around large cities, in other words, as, as a metric, in other words, it's, one is Boston, one is New York, not even New York, any, any large city around Massachusetts, so what happens to the COVID virus around those large cities, and two, I'm not sure it's just Winthrop, I mean, Winthrop is so small, so I would be very interested in hearing more regional information, because what happens in, with us is that the kids don't hang out within, in two-mile radiuses, so, but if we could get more information from the healthcare providers about a regional strategy, that would, I think would be helpful.
That's, that's where my wheelhouse is not, so that's why I bring in folks like Meredith.
I know.
Really, and, you know, that's a great question for the town health department, and I certainly can ask them if they can, you know, provide us, the school committee, some more information, you know, just around what does it look like in other communities, the communities that are around us directly, Lynn Everett, Chelsea and Revere, remaining in the red, they are much bigger districts, obviously, they have, they're multiple times the size that we are, but if, you know, you've lived in Winthrop long enough, you have to go to Revere, Chelsea, and sometimes Everett and Lynn, food shop, you know, to go to work, we, to go to the doctor, so not, not only that, we have a lot of people from other communities that work in this community, Center Business District Project, people that work at MWRA, they frequent NICS, the Pizza Center, the Winter Farms, you know, La Siesta, CBS, they frequent our places too, so, you know, we are in this beautiful peninsula of a place, which we could, if we shut the gate and didn't let anyone in or out, we could drop the spread, you know, but because of that, of that flow, so I can certainly ask Meredith if she can have some further, you know, conversation around that.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I just wanna say, though, it's, it's not our restaurants that are causing the problem, most of the people that are coming in are getting it from work and bringing it home, but our health inspectors, Allegi and But our health inspectors, Allegi and Meredith checking those restaurants almost on every other day basis. And all those restaurants in Winthrop are safe and are complying with the governor's orders. They've all been very good about it.
I hope I didn't imply that that was the case, Phil. I just wanted to say, in, in terms of people movement and why, you know, people coming in and out of the community, I've eaten at several of our restaurants and, and believe that they are extremely safe. Talking about just more so the flow of people, you know, coming to visit our very clean establishments is, you know, certainly an opportunity for, for spreading, so.
Ms. Barry.
Yes, I have, I think Suzanne had a, a follow-up question to her initial question, so maybe she can finish and then I can ask.
Sure, Ms. Swol.
No, I was just, I was just saying, it's not the restaurants. It's the fact that we're only a couple of miles. I mean, we're very small. But I can tell you that I can't stay within Winthrop, and I'm sure the kids don't stay in Winthrop. So, I'm just saying, that's why the regional issue is important to me.
Thank you. Ms. Barry.
Yeah, so Lisa, one thing that you had said, and I just want to clarify, you had mentioned that when we move out of the red, we move into the green, but we do move into the yellow first. And at that point, we have a choice to choose hybrid or, or stay with remote.
Correct. My, if my father's watching, I'm colorblind, so I apologize. These colors roll through my head 24/7, red, green, blue.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just wanted to clarify for those listening.
Oh, thank, thank you for clarifying, clarifying that. So, yes, and the school committee, by direction of, of the Department of Ed and the governor, the school committee has the right and, and the authority during any color but red to make a decision about whether or not we flip to that, to that new model. So, I think that's important. So, for the folks that think the school committee is keeping everybody out of school, that is not the case. That's really, we don't have a choice and can't vote ourselves out of that. And that includes athletics too. So, with athletics being on hold, the school committee cannot overrule that in the red. You can make a decision about athletics in those other colors, and we will visit that as soon as, as soon as we get there.
Yep. So, as a follow-up, and I, you know, I think this one metric measurement of, you know, getting out of these colors, you know, as you mentioned, doesn't take into account other statistics such as, you know, average percentage positive cases or the total number of active cases in a community at a given time. And I appreciate that you're working with the team to take a look at other metrics. But what concerns me is that these, you know, the, the moving from one color to the other color, while we're looking at them differently, if the state looks at them one way, we're going to have a hell of a time trying to, to, to change that unless there's a bigger story going on here with communities speaking to the state about what this matrix looks like. Because like you said, for a small town like Winthrop, we're not Revere, we're not Lynn, we're not Everett. You know, it's, it's, it's tough. And I'm wondering if there's a way to, and maybe I should bring this up in public, in, in the PR section, I don't know. But where we are so small and where we are surrounded, and Suzanne, I, I'm concerned about actually counting regional numbers because that's going to completely, you know, with who we're surrounded with, that's not going to bode well for the town of Winthrop or, or the children here getting back to school. So, I am, I, I think we should be focusing on Winthrop, and I'm thinking that we should be getting creative in how we are keeping our families and our, and our children safe. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to think outside of the box here. And, you know, how many families would be open to a mandatory 14-day quarantine so that kids can go back to school? How many families would be open to having their children COVID-tested so that they could go back to school within 72 hours? Can we not think about ways to, you know, petition the state and do things creatively given how unique our situation is, being that we're such a small, tight community surrounded by larger communities? I just, can we think outside of the box here? Is it possible? Is there room? Is there anybody we can talk to?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think you saw a little bit of that with athletics at, at the MIAA level when they offered the float season and, and people went a little bit nuts and said, you know, how can you do this? We don't have school and now we don't have athletics. And there was some revisiting of that. I think that comes from the state level and that you would have to petition some of the folks on here that are more savvy with state level and, and politics, which is, again, an area way outside my comfort zone or my lane. Those are the folks that you would, you would have to petition. The, the call on the, going into the red is probably the first time I saw both the state and the Department of Education working together and actually putting a mandate down. They hadn't done that before as, except when the, when the governor shut school down completely. So, I think that's the, the level it would have to be at. I think you'd have a lot of communities, there are a lot of small communities that are affected by this. You know, it's not, not just us. There are many, the Harvards, the, you know, the Woldlands, there's, there's several communities that are affected by us. Our, our issue is our surrounding communities that we include with every day, you know, so that's, that's been tough for us. But I certainly, you know, you may want to speak to some people higher up than myself about how that might get accomplished, but I would be more than interested in further discussion on that and, and certainly participating.
Thank you.
The only other thing I had left was athletics, which I think I touched on a little bit. Just given that we are a red community, unfortunately, we don't have a choice vote or not we can run athletic program. As of right now, we are running remote school and remote school programs and no, no other contact programs such as in, in-person meeting clubs or activities until further notice, which is, you know, I'm hoping and watching these numbers that we're going to get there before we thought we could. And we're going to keep pushing in that direction. Matt Sorino can come to the next meeting where we think we'll have more information. Just in case you see us, a calendar will come out for our conference that will, will show that Winthrop is on the calendar for fall athletics. We did that as a, because the folks in our region said we could be on the calendar and they know that we can't play and nor can Chelsea play because we are in the red. We wanted to be on the calendar to be proactive in the event that we get out of the red. So, we can, depending upon how quickly that happens, because we get in the red real fast, there may be a way to get out real fast. And if that's the case, we would like to be considered to be able to request to come back into the league as soon as we can to play. So, I don't want people to panic thinking we flipped our decision. We don't have the authority to do that. What we did was ask to be on that schedule proactively in the event we get out faster. Otherwise, our fall athletics will be in a float season, which is in February, which will not interfere with other seasons, in case people want to know that, because they've stretched the schedules out. They've separated sort of the winter and the spring to allow another mini-season in. You know, someone who took up golf this year, I don't know how someone's going to golf in February. I don't know, maybe we'll have some tournaments in Florida if we can fly by then, but I don't think that's, that's, that's the group that's going to miss out. So, so hopefully, we don't have to worry about that. And that was all that I had in my superintendent's report.
Ms. Swol.
Yeah, a follow-up question for you, Lisa, on, on the athletics, and that is the activities that you could do, clubs that you might be able to do virtually. Is there any thought or intention for those?
Yes. So, the virtual clubs, Mr. Crombie is, and obviously the rest of the principals, but it was Mr. Crombie and Mr. Curly that were talking about that this week. They're going to have some more conversation with the teachers. Right now, the teachers are so focused on getting remote learning up and running for our kids and getting everybody engaged and, and making sure we're all working and engaged and, and able to access technology and, and the like. Their plan is to then, next step, to begin to discuss how we can open up some of our clubs that would be virtual and which ones would those be. Wrapping our heads around all of this is a lot. And we, you know, our, our goal is to make sure our kids stay engaged. So, the next step is what else can we do for them once we've got them? More to come on that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Howard, can you bring us through the personnel matters, appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, leaves of absence?
Yes, I provided you with the new hire list in the packet, and you could see that we have had several new hires, ELL, our English Language Learner Teachers. We had lost a few teachers that have taken positions closer to home. And so, you see those folks on there. There are a total of one, 18 new hires on, on that packet and one long-term sub. In terms of resignations, we have had two ESPs who have resigned, and we had one teacher at the Cummings School who resigned and took a position closer to her home, I believe, near Newburyport. Retirements, we have no new retirements. We have no new postings. As of this moment, we have no new leaves of absence. And that is it.
I believe we have approved the sick day buyback for Eva Kearney and Jean Famaletti. Is that correct?
I believe that's, did we already do that, Patty?
We did that. We're just going to vote tonight for their citations that we're going to give them when they leave.
So, it's two of them?
Just wanted to make sure they had their sick time. I have, I believe there's two resolutions. I'll read them both and then I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution to be accepted by the school committee. Whereas Jean Famaletti has completed 27 years of service for the students of Winthrop, and Jean Famaletti has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague, and Jean Famaletti has had a strong positive impact on scores of Winthrop students through her display of genuine concern for young people. Therefore, be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winthrop expresses its congratulations and best wishes and that it is voted and made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on September 14th, 2020. And then we also have, whereas Eva Kearney has completed 27 years of service for the students of Winthrop, whereas Eva Kearney has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague, and whereas Eva Kearney has had a strong positive impact on scores of Winthrop students through her display of genuine concern for young people, therefore be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winthrop expresses its congratulations and best wishes and that it is voted and made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on September 14th, 2020. Can I get a motion for the school committee to accept the resolutions?
Motion.
And Jean Famaletti.
Motion.
By Ms. Swol. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Discussion. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please, for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabienko?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes. Okay.
Question, where the chairman?
Yes.
How are we going to meet to sign these? Where will we meet to sign these?
I believe it's individually.
You want one individual signature?
Yes.
They are individual signatures. So, I can try to get as many, you know, I can probably try to get Denise to have you sign them and just maybe meet people at the town hall door or however we can, however we can do it.
As we do it safely, right?
Thank you.
So, if, if you could reach out, if you're having trouble signing this, we'll have Patty reach out and try to schedule something for everyone.
Yes.
Superintendent evaluation.
So, just, yeah, so just putting that on your radar, not that it's a preferred activity of mine, nor am I asking you to rush it. There are many other, much more important pieces of business that the school district has to do. However, if the school committee feels that that piece of business needs to be done, now feel free to instruct me to set up a subcommittee meeting to get that process going. And I believe Gus is the head of that subcommittee.
I believe that is. Yes, Mr. Matucci?
Just, I think the way things are right now and the situation that we're in, I think when the time is appropriate, I'll, I'll schedule a meeting on that.
Thank you, Mr. Matucci.
I'm more than willing to wait my turn.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is homeschool applications and a vote to approve those applications. I believe Laurie Galvin and yourself have reviewed those and are stating it's favorable to vote on that.
Yes, and just a, a point of clarity, I know Laurie is on as well. And we've had several questions about kindergarten, so just in case there's any kindergarten listeners out there. In, if there are parents who are intending to homeschool students who are entering kindergarten, that's totally okay to do so. You do not have to fill out a formal homeschool application, homeschool your children for kindergarten, as kindergarten is not mandatory in the state. However, we would love for you to let us know that if you've already registered your child so that we can be aware of what your plans are. And a simple email to either Ms. Galvin or to Ms. Pearson at the Gorman Ford Banks would be helpful. Laurie, I don't know if there's anything you have to add on the applications that you have reviewed as well.
Just to say that, you know, there are last, at the last meeting on August 31st, you reviewed seven homeschool applications and approved. There are eight before you tonight. We already got an additional three that came in just today. So, we do anticipate that there'll be more coming in. But I, I must just want to say that, you know, the parents are taking a lot of time and energy and effort into trying to really plan well for their kids for this next year. And not because they don't want their kids coming to Winthrop, but because the, the model just right now doesn't fit what they need to be able to do for their own family situations and work situations and all. But just that they, they really all have, you know, I, I would say, from, from homeschool applications I've seen in the past, really done a lot of hard work and energy into making sure that they're providing the most that they can for their children. So, I would recommend that you approve the eight before you this evening.
Hey, can I get a motion to approve?
Can I just ask, are they, like, there's eight of them, but like, two or three families? Are there two or three kids in one family that are?
A couple of times of the, of the eight tonight, there are one, two, three, four, five families.
I just asked that everyone go through the chair, just so it can be organized, so we can organize the questions.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
That's not a problem. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the homeschool applications?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabienko?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
abstain.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, the last new business item is a memorandum of understanding between the Winthrop Teachers' Association and Winthrop School Committee. I think we've discussed that, Ms. Howard, that it's still in the process of being negotiated.
That's correct. We have a, a negotiation subcommittee meeting on Thursday. So, I expect some good work that's been being done now and has been done in the past. So, I am hopeful that we will have something for the committee to review and approve at the next committee meeting.
Okay, do we have any public comment? I, I thought I saw one, Patty, that came in. Sullivan made a comment, I believe, or a question.
There was a question in the chat.
Oh, yes, there was a question in the chat. There's, no one has their hand up right now. I believe the question was regarding if we have leftover food from when we do the breakfast and the lunches, if there are plans to do anything with that.
So, with, if I may, the, the, give you just a little background on the food. So, we are ordering, the reason we have put out the list for parents to pick and choose what days they want to have meals for their students is so that we do not get into any practice of wasting any food. We have several families that we can distribute food to for the weekends if need be, and we have our parent liaison who's been working with us to, to identify those families along with our adjustment counselors. So, is there a formal process? No, we do know we have Miyamori that we can always reach out to. So is there a formal process? No, we do know we have um Mia Moray that we can always reach out to and um certainly uh donate additional food that we have. Uh, but the purchasing of the food is um part of what this pre-planning is with the number of meals that we'll be serving uh per day with our families. So we'll be cutting back on the purchasing, um, if we don't need it. And then if we do have extras, we will be uh working within the school or, um, then if there is not a, a capacity to get or not, a need for that, certainly we can reach out to Mia Moray uh to see if they or the food bank needs any extra supplies and we would be happy to do that.
Excellent.
Um, we do have Karen Chavez for public comment.
Uh, first, I recognize Suzanne's vote.
I have a, I just have a question. Is this open to all children in Winthrop or just those that are enrolled in, in Winthrop Public Schools?
So that's a good question that I don't have a good answer for, but I can find out. I believe it is, and Susan, um, you can correct me if you know the answer, but if not, I can check it out tomorrow with our food service people. I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow at eleven. Um, I believe it's all enrolled students, but we, if there is a family in need, um, you know, we certainly can work with that family through either Mia Moray or uh through our own devices if, if we're able to do that. Uh, I can check that out and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Ms. Chavez?
Good evening.
How are you?
I am good. I hope everybody is well. Um, just a couple of things. So we're starting off the school year with no M O U with the um, with the Teachers Association. Is that correct?
Uh, fa- hi, Mrs. Chavez, it's Lisa. Um, factually, you are correct. Um, but it should be a, a point of uh clarity that they have a, a collective bargaining agreement in place. So that collective bargaining agreement that is in place uh is the standing collective bargaining agreement. And anything in the M O U um is, most of what would be in the M O U is clarity on certain points or anything additional uh that we're asking folks to do.
Again, uh, Mr. Perrin, through the chair. Um, I guess my concern then, um, Ms. Howard, is everything that's been going on with the schools that are fighting this. You know, there, there are a couple of school districts, as you, everybody knows, um, that have been fighting, um, the teachers actually going back. But we're not going to have that issue.
So all of our teachers, um, in terms of, you know, fighting, I don't think so. All of our teachers are back. They have been back since the thirty-first. Um, we do have some staff members that have uh extenuating circumstances and have followed, you know, the legal F M L A process uh for that. Uh, if that's something that they're in need of, given uh their own situation. Uh, but we've not had uh any refusal of any of our staff to come to school. We're having conversations, but they're collegial conversations, they're problem-solving conversations. Um, they're listening. You know, it's a, a lot of explaining to compare us, you know, to, to, to talk about why we are a safe place to be. Um, and then, you know, you, you, there's a lot of, of human nature. People are scared, people are worried. It's my job to convince them that we uh have the right things in place. I believe we've done that. Uh, and we do have all of our staff uh back in school, those who can't physically be here without the need for uh an accommodation uh through A D A or uh the like, if that kind of makes sense.
And I, the other thing I was at, going to ask about was, where you're doing a pre-K refund, does that mean you do not plan on having a pre-K program for this school year?
Good question. So no, it does not mean that, but thank you for asking because it does require some clarity. So we are servicing our preschool students with disabilities. So any student who um has an I E P or a student coming out of early intervention that's requiring services is getting serviced. It's the fee-based general education preschool that is on hold right now uh because we are not able to have our students physically in the building. And those um who have tried uh remote preschool, um, it's a very interesting process to have little ones sitting uh in front of a computer. So um, at this particular time, we are not doing the fee-based or charging parents to send their students to our preschool. I believe that involves, Susan, about fifteen to
It's probably less because a lot of people did not start paying because of all, everything that's going on.
Well, some of our parents chose, um, you know, to sort of withdraw their, uh, their uh application or, or their, their approval to have their kids come and then pay that service. And then the handful of students that we had left, uh, we determined that we were not going to be able to provide them um with a quality preschool. Uh, and we've spoken to those parents to let them know. Our hope is when we're back in school that we revisit that. We have to look at our capacity, uh, make, making sure where we're at with staffing at that point. Do we have the appropriate number uh of teachers to be able uh to then put that back out to the parents who had already been accepted, obviously, first? To see if they're still interested in coming back.
Well, I do wish everybody good luck on Wednesday. Um, I know you've worked hard enough to make it a success. And I know that I have a grandson that will be happy at starting.
Yeah. Tell him he better be up and dressed appropriately in front of that.
He will most certainly be up and dressed most appropriately.
Right. Up in a chair, nobody's laying in bed. We have all kinds of rules that are going out tonight uh and that uh went out last night. The school rules are still in place. Uh, so you have to be dressed, yeah, you have the appropriate clothing on, keep your hats off your head, all that kind of stuff is, um, and that's going to take some time because we have a lot of undoing that we have to work on over the next couple of months. Uh, and we'll be patient with our students and hopefully our parents will be patient with us.
Well, thank you again, Lisa.
Thank you, Karen, for those comments. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, moving on to public relations. Ms. Who, do you have anything this evening? Mr. Boncory?
Let's everybody, please be safe, keep your mask on if you're not six feet away from someone, wash your hands very frequently. It's important that we get out of this red and we can get our kids back to school. So please do the right thing. Uh, the Board of Health has met, as I said, and they're going to meet again. And they are going to be issuing fines for people that are not wearing masks on the playgrounds or in the park. So please, if you're in a public area, even if, if you're not six feet away, wear your mask, please.
Thank you, Mr. Boncory. Ms. Barry? Julie?
No, thank you, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Matucci, you have anything this evening? Ms. Powell?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Capabienko?
Uh, just that I encourage everyone to get tested if you have any symptom, symptoms or just, you know, want to try it. It's free and it's right down the, the center. So I highly recommend everyone takes advantage of that.
Thank you, Mr. Capabienko. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Who? Patty, can you please call a roll call?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabienko?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Who?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Night off.
Night off.
Night off.